Can you hear me? I'm not muted. All right, we're going to call this the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission of Order. And this time, uh... That's the week, let me...
Okay, man, we're live.
I have the invitation, this is our invitation. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us during this difficult time of the pandemic, that you give us wisdom to make good and right decisions for all of the people of the city of Harlingen and for those who we may affect. We ask that you watch over all of our families, all of our residents, all of our loved ones, our neighbors, and our friends as we deal with this virus and as we deal with economic difficulties, as those within our communities struggle to get food for their families. We ask that you be with all of our veterans. We ask that you be with our first responders and our healthcare workers, our grocers, and everyone who is working during this time to keep our community safe and healthy. We ask you, Lord, also to be with each and every one of our staff members or city employees who are working so hard for each and every one of us to maintain our city services so that our city runs well and our people are served with basic needs such as water, sewer, public safety, and everything else that's done by our staff. Lord, we ask this in your name and in Jesus Christ's name. Amen. All right, let's, uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Stand and find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever to prosper. Thank you. I think I'll already called the meeting to order. Amanda, do we have any... First, do we have any written communications submitted?
You're muted, Amanda.
Need to unmute your line. Thanks.
Now, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have one there, and it's from Juan J.B. Garcia, 5718 Wildwood, Persimmon Street, and the topic is "Speed Hump Request in Wildwood Subdivision." So I'm going to go ahead and call him right now, and I'll set the timer for two minutes, ma'am.
All right, that's... So that's not a written communication, that's an app... He asked to call in?
Yes, this is, um...
Do we have any written submission?
Yeah.
No? Okay, so the only one that we have signed up for a call is Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and call him and, uh, and hear from him.
Okay.
Hi, this is Juan B. Garcia. Sorry, Mr. Call, please leave the job at its own station.
Mr. Garcia, this is Amanda Yusonda in the city of Harlingen. Uh, you requested to speak on your citizen's communication, and we're trying to connect. Um, Mayor, he's not responding. Do I...
Amanda, let's try one more time.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, uh, he said, uh, okay. He's calling, he's calling. Hello, Mr. Garcia? Oh, okay, I'm going to put on speaker, and I'm going to give you two minutes, and I'll let you know when I start the clock. One moment, please.
Thank you, thank you. Come on, my guy.
Okay. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
You have two minutes, and I'm going to start the clock now.
Okay, thank you. By the way, there is a delay on there. Thank you, City Commissioners, I'm watching live right now, which is kind of neat. Uh, Mayor, I'd also like to add to your prayer that we can solve this blood crisis if we stick together, we can. Um, but back to my topic, the reason I'm calling here is because, we talked on January 20th, 2015, over five years ago, the president of the Wildwood HOA, Charlie Vaughn, applied for a traffic study for a speed hump on Wildwood Persimmon. The study did not produce the results that warranted speed humps. Five years later, we're trying again. Um, on March 20th, we got word back that, first of all, we garnered the 35% of residents on the street of the petition that we needed to get the study performed in first phase. Um, and on March 20th, 2020, again, we felt produced the result, uh, that warranted speed humps. Since then, the need for a speed hump has become more dire for the following reasons. One, Wildwood Persimmon is the only street in Wildwood that has no speed humps. It's the most traveled in the neighborhood, and used as a shortstop by many surrounding neighborhoods. It makes no sense that speed humps were approved and installed on all the other streets in the neighborhood, which are way less traveled. Two, since the COVID-19 pandemic, Wildwood subdivision, like many other neighborhoods in Harlingen, has seen a dramatic increase in pedestrian activity, cyclists, and children at play. The traffic has not slowed down. Wildwood HOA has the $2,500 to install a speed hump. As a member, as a board member of the HOA lineup, at a bare minimum, to add as this as an agenda item for unanimous consent by the City Commissioners for a speed hump on Wildwood Persimmon. If possible, the residents would appreciate it. This speed hump can be approved before the next week. It just takes one speeding car to bring traffic into our neighborhood, and you, Mayor, and City Commissioners can execute this process.
Mr. Garcia, your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And since this is citizen communication and it's not an agenda item, it's not... There's no discussion, but we thank you for the call in, and maybe we can follow it with you. Uh, we have staff number following.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
There was no other citizen communication?
No.
Okay, so we go to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 1st, 2020, and the joint special meeting of the City Commissioner and the Economic Development Corporation of Harlingen of April 21st, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, there's a motion to approve the minutes.
Remove. Second.
We have second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. All right, the consent agenda. Uh, we're going to take item two A out, and I'm just going to ask, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items two B through D?
Still moves, Mayor? Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second on items two B through D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did y'all say aye? All of us. Those opposed, like sign. All right, so we go back to item two A. Uh, you want to, uh, you want to take this up or pass it?
Good evening. Robert will make a short presentation on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance amending the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Commissioners. Uh, before you, we have the second reading of the budget amendment. Uh, we do have an increase in revenues and expenditures from our first reading. Our first reading, uh, included 566,248 of items for amendment. Uh, in this second reading, we have increased the revenues and the related expenditures related to the grants of the 499 sidewalk and the 9th and 13th Street greenage to account for those grant funds, so it will increase from 566 to 5 million... 3 million 832,929, which is an increase of 3 million 266,684 in revenues and related expenditures. It's the same increase, and these are to account for those grants that have already been acknowledged through the City Commission, uh, so that we can account for them going forward. So staff recommends approval of this, uh, second reading of the amendment.
This is more of a housekeeping item, right, Robert?
That is correct.
Motion for approval, man?
Second?
All right, we have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item three, it's a presentation by Carl Rigs and Ingram CPAs and advisors regarding the city of Harlingen comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2018, 19. I'm calling, uh, Quentin Anderson to deliver that report for us.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. Uh, we had the opportunity to meet with the Audit Committee of the city and to review the comprehensive annual financial report, related information, our advisory comments, and recommendations as well, and I'm here to give you a quick overview of that financial statement. We've got a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, uh, and I'm hoping I can cooperate with your technology, Mr.... Okay, so here we go. All right, do we see... You guys see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, so... Starting, uh, you know, the first thing I want to talk about in terms of just giving you a comprehensive overview, we've completed the financial statements, and again, we reviewed it with your Audit Committee, went over the opinion and compliance matters with the Audit Committee and our recommendations. So one of the things I want to point out, and you, I think you guys hopefully have a bound draft of the CAFR and other information in your packet, but you have historically received, you know, a certificate of achievement for every comprehensive reporting, and last year's comprehensive annual financial report received that certificate as well. You'll be sending in your report to the GFOA again this year for evaluation and observing every indication that you will have provided with these highest standards of financial reporting for local governments. I think that's always important, and one of the first things that you have in the front of your CAFR to acknowledge, uh, the emphasis that you place on financial reporting. What you have in the audited financial statements are financial statements on the primary government, which are your governmental activities, police fire, public works, services, administration, and the business-type activities of the city, which are golf course, municipal auditorium, the museum, the sanitation services, and the bulk of business-type activities is the sanitation department. We'll see that when we look at some charts and graphs. So also included in the financial statements are four component units that are discreetly presented. There's the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation, Harlingen Community Improvement Board, Harlingen Waterworks System, and Valley National Airport. Uh, those reports, those component units also have individual financial statements included within your CAFR and lots of detailed information as well. We've issued two opinions in your financial reporting package. The first one is opinion on the financial statements themselves, and that appears on page 33 in your CAFR. It's an unmodified opinion that says that the financial statements barely present in all material respects the financial position of the city of Harlingen and the changes in your financial position and the various activities of the city. And that's what you would be expecting and anticipating as commissioners, and we reviewed with the Audit Committee. So it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. There's also an opinion in the back of the financial statements that deals with compliance over each major program and internal controls of compliance with your major federal awards in accordance with uniform guidance. And two of the larger programs for the city were the airport improvement grant, which is generally fairly significant program, I think over $6 million this past year, and then there were some CDVG funds as well. And the combination of those two represented, you know, nearly 90% of total federal awards. In our opinion on compliance indicated that we believe that you complied in all material respects with the requirements that could have a direct and material effect, or sparring for each of those major programs. So that's important too. And on page 351, this CAFR is a huge report, it's over 350 pages. On 351, there's a summary of the results of the audit and the compliance work and internal control reporting, and it would say that we did not identify any material weaknesses in controls over financial reporting or compliance, and our testing didn't identify any other significant deficiencies during our test work. It also indicates that you complied, as I mentioned, in all material respects with the requirements that could have an impact on compliance. And so that summary is a one-page summary of a lot of work that went into testing and reporting, and it reflects favorably on the city's finance department and departments that are responsible for compliance, which goes well beyond the finance department. I'm going to give you some of the financial highlights that were included in the CAFR. If we look at this chart, if you had your paper copy of the CAFR on page 54 and 55, we've summarized this information, it shows assets and deferred outflows growing from 204 million to nearly $216 million end of the fiscal period. Your liabilities grew, uh, as well, from 96 million to 110 million. The bulk of that liability increase occurs in net pension obligations, of course, employment obligations, and there are some significant disclosures on each of those programs. It's not increasing because of any new debt, there were no new debt issuance since during this time period for the primary government. So you made payments on long-term debt, and the changes are essentially in pension-related obligations. Net position, which is the difference between those assets and liabilities, is 105 million. It dropped slightly from 107 million dollars, your expenditures in governmental activities were about $3 million greater than revenues, and the bulk of that again came in, uh, changes in pension-related liabilities, and generally, I think the charts would show that it came in, in, uh, in the public works area. This chart, uh, comes from page 56 in the CAFR, it shows a revenue comparison with the primary government, and revenues have grown consistently over the past few years. It took $56.7 million for governmental activities, and stayed about the same in your business-type activities, remembering that those are sanitation services, the museum, the golf course, and the municipal auditorium. Uh, this chart breaks down those revenues into multiple categories, and we'll see that the bulk of revenues for the city comes from sales tax, which has grown from 18.9 million to 19.1 million, and for property taxes, which grew from 18.5 million to 19.3 million dollars. There was no change in the property tax rate during the period under audit. I know subsequent to year-end, there was a slight change, but this increase in revenues comes from property values and collections. Franchise fees are also a significant source of revenues, nearly 3.3 million. Operating grants and contributions, about 3.5 million, and charges for services, about 5.8 million. For business-type activities, as I mentioned in our initial slide, sanitation services is the primary, the dominating force in your business-type activities, with nearly $10 million in revenues growing from 9.6 million dollars. And then the other, the golf course provides additional revenues, museum and auditorium, no significant source of additional revenues. This comes from page 64 in the CAFR. This chart, uh, shows a breakdown of expenditures and relative expenditures in relation to what they make up of each piece of the pie for governmental activities. And what you see is that... I'm sorry. I said, I said that, uh, the change in expenditures, when I was talking about the additional expenditures, I mentioned public works, but I should have said public safety. The $3 million increase in expenditures was in public safety, you can see that in this chart. And so, uh, you know, the big part of what you do, you know, 51%, 52% last year is public safety. Part of this increase was in pension expense-related obligations. Uh, but that's $30.5 million, and over 50% of the city's expenditures. Uh, highways and streets make up, you know, $7.2 million, 12%. General government, about $7 million, 12% also. Those are the bigger categories of expenditures. And highways and streets, they make up 12% at $7.2 million. Typical, uh, government functions. In the business-type activities, sanitation services makes up the bulk of expenditures. You had over $10 million in revenues, $8 million in expenses in sanitation services. The golf course, we saw on the previous chart, 864,000 in revenues, had $1.2 million in expenditures. And then this table is a reflection of your general fund balance, which grew slightly from the prior year. At $20.7 million, it grew to $20,789, about a little over $80,000 in growth. So revenues compared to expenditures in the general fund essentially broke even for the fiscal year. And I think your transmittal letter from management reflects that this fund balance represents probably about 150 days of this next year's operating budget that you just amended as Robert went through. So, uh, it's about 150 days of the budget approved by the commission for the fiscal year that we're in. With, let's, I'll back up to that, just... What I would say, uh, you know, in the mayor's prayer about this pandemic and the situation that we've been in, uh, I would say that, you know, the city of Harlingen was blessed to, you know, enter into this health crisis, what has turned into an economic crisis. You were blessed to enter in it with strong financial condition. I think that's important to note. Again, you have a healthy fund balance, I believe, you know, with, that you have the reporting capabilities internally to make sure the commission knows where you stand every month, and, you know, with good reporting and management. And I feel, I'm confident, I'm sure that you are. You know, the city's going to maneuver through this health crisis and remain ultimately in strong financial condition. So you put yourself in a good place to be if anybody had to experience what we're experiencing, and I think that's important to note. You know, one of the tougher things that we encountered personally, while we all tried to work remotely, I, we had a blessing in our family, we had a grandchild born on Easter Sunday, and the toughest thing is that, you know, we couldn't travel and be with him, but we had the opportunity to, uh, to meet him yesterday. And so, uh, you know, when I, when I look at him, what he's saying to me is, you know, "Don't worry, Grandpa, you know, God's got this." He reminds us that, for me, now God's in control. You know, the city's in good, healthy financial condition. You know, we're thankful that we can rely on our faith and confidence, and we can trust that, you know, things are going to be okay.
Congratulations, Grandpa.
Yeah, that's it, that's it from us. I didn't introduce Matt, he's in the background. Matt Montmiller worked with Robert in your finance department, and being in this CAFR ready, we appreciate all the hard work that we did too, so thanks for the time tonight.
Thanks, Quentin.
Congratulations, Quentin, and as you can add to your family. Does anybody have any questions for Quentin? All right, well, thank you very much for that good report. Yeah, I think, uh, I think if there's any, uh, any need to argue in support of a strong fund balance, certainly at this time during a pandemic, and that we are blessed to be in this kind of financial condition with that side, with that fund balance. All right, so the next item on the agenda is item four, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution. Is there... So that was just a presentation. Item three is just a presentation. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to submit a grant application in reference to the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program fiscal year 20 from the Office of the Governor Public Safety Office, Criminal Justice Division Chief Kestner.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a grant through the state of Texas for the coronavirus funding for a variety of reasons for overtime or personal protective equipment or equipment for the public safety. So it is just a request, and so we can apply for this grant.
Motion to approve. Chief Kestner, is this easier? Go ahead, go ahead, Richard, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question. How's the turn-on time, or expect the turn-on time for funding? Is it a long process, or is it pretty, pretty quick? Because in most cases, they've been pretty quick to fund, uh, your request, yes? Or in this particular case?
That's my understanding, that it's fairly quick once we submit, but I don't know for sure until we actually submit.
This is a different, this is a little different. Uh, this is not one of the usual grants that I think we apply for, because it's related to the pandemic. Is there a motion to approve?
I made the motion, Mayor.
A second.
Any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we, uh, Chief, we appreciate you going after these grants. Item five is consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to submit a grant application in reference to the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program fiscal year 20 for the Department of Justice.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, again, this is a similar type grant, but this one's a federal grant through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. This one actually has an allocation for the city of $55,218. So we're going to use this one more for equipment that we need to help sanitize and disinfect areas, large areas throughout the city. It's a pretty wide grant, so I would recommend...
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item six, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Harlingen Fire Department to submit a resolution as part of the Homeland Security Grant Application Process for fiscal year 2021 for $28,750 for one Polaris Ranger and one Firelight Transport Carley for the regional hazmat UDB transport vehicle project, uh, for Chief Rubio.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, the Harlingen Fire Department, as you mentioned, submitted an Homeland Security Grant Application. Uh, again, this was mentioned for the amount of $28,750 for Polaris and one Firelight Transport Doting for regional hazmat UDB transport project. Uh, this grant application is now being forwarded to State Homeland Security Office with further consideration, review to it.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, motion carries. All right, item seven. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution. Finding that AEP Texas Inc.'s application to amend distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. So, Gabe?
Uh, Mayor and members of the commission, on April 3rd, AEP filed an application for distribution cost recovery factor. Um, it will increase their residential rates for everyone by an increase of $1.83. The resolution will allow us to hire Carl Malipa and Thomas Burkado to review the rates to make sure that they're reasonable. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Gabe, can I ask a question, or Mayor? It seems like every year, AEP tries to increase their rates, and how successful were they over the last couple of years? You know, by hiring these consultants, were we able to reduce their requests? Or can you give me a little history on that?
All right, every time we've hired Carl Malipa and Thomas Burkado, they've always been able to negotiate lower rates, and it doesn't cost the cities anything. The rates are paid for from AEP funds. The rates are paid for from AEP funds, so they've been successful.
But I guess, more specifically, the question, how much was the increase last year? Do you have an idea?
No, last year was a close one. This was a whole different, last year's was several million dollars. I think the rate they negotiated was a couple hundred thousand less.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious, because it just seems to come up every year.
They do, they also apply for these rates.
Okay, thank you.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Unfortunately, this is a process, and we have to, and it's an administrative process that occurs in Austin, and if we don't, we either accept it, the rate increase, which we don't want to do because they just get what they want, but we have to go through this. Otherwise, we have to get representation to help us negotiate a different solution, and that is an administrative law process that occurs before the utility commission in Austin.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. Item eight is consideration of possible action to approve a contract agreement for consulting services to develop a regional five-year consolidated and strategic plan. Gabe?
Mayor and Members of the Commission, on February 19, the City Commission approved the memorandum of understanding with Brownsville, San Diego, and Harlingen. The attached agreement with TDA Consulting will actually prepare the consolidated plan and cost the city approximately $18,200, but that will be paid for out of the CDVG program. So staff recommends approval, legally asked to review and approve the contract.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner.
I made the second, I made the motion.
Right, motion of second. Yeah, Commissioner Lyle made the motion. Actually, y'all tied, but the Commissioner Lyle is accepted, we'll take the second.
Somewhere I keep getting a little thing says my internet, it's not good, so we're good.
All right, we've got a motion of second. Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of possible action to enter into laboratory service agreement with Clinical Pathology Laboratory, CPL, and authorize city manager to sign the agreement. Josh?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. This is to enter an agreement with the CPL lab, which is here in Harlingen. It is to allow us to test for COVID-19 at a cost of $100 per test. It will select, as previously discussed, we're concentrating primarily on our elderly at this moment, those who really need to be tested. So this will allow us to facilitate those testing capabilities. Senator, thank you.
This is, Mayor, Commissioner, this just provides us another option for testing. We have the partnership with UTRGV, we have the state coming in doing testing, we have the test site in Brownsville, and now we'll have a local app that we'll be able to tap into whenever we need to, in addition to everything else. So staff has recommended approval.
Josh, is this a 24-hour test?
Go ahead, Commissioner Reuben.
I'm sorry, are they testing the samples in their lab or are they sending off somewhere? You know, is it like one of those 24-hour tests or 48-hours, or does it depend on the test itself?
We're looking at 48-hours to 72-hours, but they tell us depending on the amount of tests that we receive for the day, there could even, if there's less amounts to be processed, of course, it could be done faster, but if they have a lot of tests to be processed, it could take up to 72-hours.
But they're processing in-house, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the partnership that we have with UTRGV is great, and also the partnership that we have with Brownsville, but as we, this has been a long process of trying to see more testing become more available to our community members, and so more access, more access points, and this would also be, Dan, this would also be something that could be reimbursed by the funds that are being allocated to the City of Harlingen by the state of Texas.
That's correct, Mayor.
That's correct.
Action for approval?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of possible action to enter into a HIPAA business associate agreement with Valley Med Urgent Care as it relates to COVID-19 testing for Harlingen residents and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Josh?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner. This item is a second part to the agreement we have with the City of Brownsville already. This will allow us to receive information from Harlingen residents that took the test at this time of the site. This agreement is with the Alleg Mad Urgent providing that testing for the City of Brownsville, and this agreement allows to receive that information from the Harlingen citizens.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11, board appointment. Does anybody have a board appointment?
I have none.
I have none. I have Mike Garza to be reappointed to the Harlingen Waterworks Board.
Reuben, is he timed out? I mean, he's, you only get to be on two turns.
We consulted with his attorney, with the Waterworks attorney, and he's okay.
So he gets to serve more in two turns?
He checked with Jeanne McCullough, their attorney, and he's okay to serve again.
Well, it'll be subject to, it'll be subject to review by the city secretary, but, all right, anybody else have a board appointment?
No.
All right, we have a vote.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, item 12 is the executive session, executive closed session, attorney-client consultation pursuant to section 551.0712 Texas Government Code to provide legal service in the council in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, obligations, in connection with the Federal Aviation Administration correspondence pertaining to armed performance issues and related legal matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So, move.
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to be in executive session consulting with our attorney. There is no action to, there will be no action that will follow this, so the meeting will be concluded once we're done with the executive session. So we are now out of executive session at 6:29 PM, and that concludes our meeting. So thank you all very much. Thank you all for watching online and participating that way. Y'all have a good evening and stay healthy.